Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 22, 2023, regular meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. We welcome everyone and glad to see everybody here and everybody out there on YouTube land. I just wanted to say happy spring. Happy spring to everyone. Is it our custom we hold a moment of silence? And if you would join the board with a moment of silence, we'll appreciate it. Thank you. Now, please join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just testing, Mr. Mack is on the phone. Can you hear us, John?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Great. Mr. Lewis, any changes to the agenda tonight?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
No special actions? So that brings us to our first round of public comments. If there's anyone in the public who would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, give us your name and what part of the township you're from, and good evening.
My name is Andrea Ahern, and I live in Eagle Ridge. I wanted to come this evening to follow up from Resident Jay McGuigan's visit to you guys on the 22th of February regarding some concerns he had relative to the Mayfield development, formerly Arcadia. When Jay came, he had a lot of information for you guys, and at the time, you really felt it was more appropriate that he reduce his questions to writing and put them forth to the board, which he has done. And he wasn't able to make it here this evening. He asked if I come and kind of follow up on those items. So that's really the purpose of my visit. One of the things that Jay had put forth in his questions, I don't know if you guys have seen his questions yet. I know that they went to Mica, and I know that Mica did follow up with Jay on the 17th of March and kind of posed that Leanna would be the better representative to answer the questions. I'm not sure if the members of the board went through Jay's questions or not. I certainly did. And the reason that, you know, I agreed to come and speak on Jay's behalf is because when I'm looking at these questions, I'm not entirely sure that Leanna is the best person to answer some of the questions, although I think she's incredibly capable as an engineer. These questions seem to fall outside the scope of what our township engineers are tasked to do, specifically questions four through 10 in the email that Jay had sent per your request. Some of the questions are relative to renegotiating if the Saturday hours are appropriate. I don't even know if Leanna negotiated the first agreement to know if she'd be the best person to renegotiate that agreement. He also cited several dates, there's six of them, where there were violations. He's asking if fines were issued. I'm also asking that question, if fines were issued and what's kind of going on with those open items again. Leanna, at this point, I believe, is tasked with construction management, answering to whether fines are issued and if anybody is following up on these violations, seems to be, again, outside her scope. So I'm here to ask the board, Jay did follow through. You asked him to reduce it to writing. He did. He hasn't heard from anybody in leadership other than Mica, and Mica, we appreciate you doing that. But he kind of, for lack of a better term, punted it to Leanna, and that wasn't really the intent of Jay's appearance here. So I'm asking this board, if any of you have seen Jay's questions, if you have, perhaps you could share some feedback as to why Leanna is the team member assigned to answering them. And then, the last thing I wanted to mention, he did a great job. He provided a lot of appendixes. I don't know if you guys have seen this, but he put forth some really good work product. I do think that a senior member of this township leadership should be responding to him. The only person in leadership on this project that got back to Jay was the developer himself. We didn't vote for the developer. We voted, you know, for representation that's now sitting at this board. So I'm curious to see who on this board or what the next action items are to getting back to Jay and those residents that are concerned about these violations, specifically the height and the work hours. Mr. Chairman, are you in a position to?
We will get you answers. I believe there was a meeting that answers were given. And I mean, Mica and his team, Leanna, they're the ones who are most involved in setting the parameters in the beginning. And so I think they are the best ones to answer.
But just for my own edification, did Mica and Leanna negotiate the contract that Jay asked? Could it be renegotiated? Were they the township representatives that negotiated that contract?
I am not sure.
So if you're referring, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so if you're referring to the developer's agreement, that was agreed to between the developer and the township and/or solicitor put that document together. There is a separate set of minutes where that restricts the hours, and that was performed by the engineer's office as the construction manager.
Right, and I read those minutes. So those minutes, though, were just an articulation of the contract that was negotiated?
I would have to have it in front of me to be able to answer that left to right, but for the most part, it's reflective of the developer's agreement, yes.
Okay, so I think, you know, just in closing, I think we can all agree that when Jay came before you guys, he reduced his questions to writing. I don't know if you saw them, but again, they were very well done. And he really was looking for leadership to get back to him. And if you go through the questions, you'll see why. So I really do hope that somebody, in terms of leadership, is going to get back to Jay outside of, you know, Mr. Duckworth, who extended him that courtesy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we did get the questions, by the way, and I found them compelling as well. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Any others for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along. Minor approvals. We have Harb with us this evening.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I'm Dolmoller, Chair of the Township Historic Architectural Review Board. At our most recent meeting on March the 8th, we reviewed a certificate of appropriateness application from Listalla Restaurant to build a pavilion in the area where there used to be a bocce court. You may be aware that that's already there. So it was kind of a backwards step. But in reviewing the application, the Harb did vote unanimously to recommend approval of that COA.
Okay, we have that before, it was in our packet this evening. So they did build it already?
It has been built to the specs that were in the application.
Okay. And it seemed to be that they were looking for the stain color was the main item. All right. Are there any other questions from the board? Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the boards of mind, it would be a motion to approve the application of Listalla Restaurant for a certificate of appropriateness for a pavilion at 18 Swamp Road, subject to compliance with Harb's memorandum dated March 8, 2023.
Have a motion, wait a second. Thank you, Mr. Clabro, thank you, Mr. Davis. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving this certificate of appropriateness for Listalla, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing.
Thank you very much. If I may change hats briefly. I'm also Chair of the Joint Newtown Historic Commission, and just wanted to make sure that everybody on the board got my message about the site visitation that we have tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m., and hopefully some of you can make it out. Thank you.
We did get it. At least I got it. Thank you. All right. Okay, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Do we have someone from the Planning Commission? Yes, we do. Peggy Driscoll. Welcome, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Newtown Township Planning Commission. We met last night. We had one application. We reviewed the zoning hearing board application for Garrett Patchinger and Shelby Wrenstein at 3 Millstone Drive. They are seeking relief for increased impervious to 35.78%, where the maximum permitted is 25% and existing per prior variance. They are also seeking a variance to allow an in-ground swimming pool to be constructed in a resource protection area. A prior variance had been granted for the development for disturbance of Class 1 agricultural soils, and the applicants had been granted a variance to install a fence. The commission agreed that the resource protection area did present a hardship, leaving very little space for outdoor improvements. The commission also agreed that we could not recommend support of the plan as presented and the requested increase in impervious surface is very large, and the application as presented did not give sufficient information on the proposed infiltration system. We recommend that the township engineer review the plans. We also recommend that an effort be made to reduce the proposed pool and concrete surround to bring the required relief to a smaller percentage of impervious surface. It should be noted that the applicants had indicated to the zoning hearing board in 2019 that they have no intention of building any other structures on the subject property. And that was all we had. Any questions?
Any questions for Peggy? I think I have one. That last sentence. It should be noted that applicants had indicated zoning hearing board. Back into, they made that statement in 2019.
In 2019, they put a covered deck on. And I mean, the issue we have is the impervious. It's a large structure. It's, you know, one of our members had questions about the drainage. But they had a proposed tank, I believe, to run the water out into the street. They want to put the, you know, they'll be located back in the ag soils. And one thing that we had too, that no disturbance, they are Lot 3, no disturbance would be permitted beyond the resource protection line on lots 1 to 11. And a variance they got in 2019, or 2021, was granted to allow a fence in the resource protection area. You know, we really liked to see Leanna's report on that. You know, we had a lot of questions.
Okay. All right. Mr. Manager, does the zoning hearing board get the planning commission synopsis?
Not typically, as far as I understand it, no.
We're going to be coming back to this, I think.
It is on my report whether the board wishes to take a position on that zoning hearing board application.
Yeah, we would really like to see Leanna's report on this before we, you know, make any recommendation on it. We feel there was a lot of information we didn't have.
Understood. I think the problem with that is they have the option of moving forward on April 6th, whether that report is provided or not, and whether the, I don't think the planning commission meets between now and then. Maybe it does, but, you know.
I think April 3rd or 4th is our next meeting.
Oh, so it is before the zoning hearing board. Did they indicate that they would come back to you?
We had suggested it, but they didn't say yes or no whether they were coming back or not, before they go to zoning.
Right.
You know, I know they're anxious to move forward on this because if they don't get started on it now, they're not going to have their pool completed this summer. I mean, we're trying to work with them, but they're asking for a lot of relief.
And they've got a variance in 2019.
Right.
They got a variance in 2021. And now it's 2023.
Right, right. They, you know, and the Penns Preserve Record Plan, it says no disturbance shall be permitted beyond the resource protection line on lots 1 to 11, which includes their Lot 3. But they did get a variance to allow a fence. So it's a little convoluted.
I did notice that they had letters from the neighbors.
No, they did not. They said the neighbors weren't supportive of it, but we didn't see it, we didn't have anything in writing.
I'm pretty sure I saw.
Did you? We didn't have them in our packet.
From 1 Millstone and 5 Millstone.
Well, we have one, we have the, well.
And their homeowners.
I have a paper in my packet.
Yeah.
But yeah, there's one from 1 Millstone Drive. I think there was another one that I saw.
They weren't in our packets.
Five Millstone.
Actually from the Penns Preserve Homeowners Association Crescent.
Yes, they did that too.
I do recall seeing them. What we didn't see was a, was a, there's a neighbor right behind them, and we asked about that, and there was no, the neighbor would be affected.
All right. We will be coming back to make a decision on what to do with the zoning hearing board recommendation.
You know, if they want to come back to planning before zoning hearing, you know, we do want to see the engineer's report.
Is there a way to arrange that? For the planning commission?
We can put it back on the agenda.
Well, you'd have to notify the property owner, or the applicant, obviously, if that happened.
And we don't meet until the 12th of April again?
We're okay with them coming back to our next meeting.
Okay. And maybe we can decide what we're going to do when we come to it in the solicitor's report. But thank you.
Okay.
For your report.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. All right. Coming next in line is the Environmental Advisory Council. And I see Mr. Gillis. Your reputation precedes you. I was talking to Ellen, who told me you were coming to present.
Happy spring.
Happy spring.
My name is Peter Gillis. I'm Secretary of the Environmental Advisory Council. We have two main items for the report. The first is on the single-use plastic ordinance we're working on. The EAC has a scheduled meeting on April 3rd at 7:00 p.m. to introduce a single-use plastic bag and straw ordinance to businesses and residents. Over 100 businesses were sent the invitation and also to members of the Newtown Business Association. The EAC prepared a sample ordinance that will be provided to businesses prior to the April 3rd meeting. This is an in-person meeting where businesses and residents are invited to attend because we value their feedback. We have a guest speaker, Faran Savitz from Penn Environment. He has assisted and advised all the Pennsylvania municipalities, including Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, when writing their ordinance. He will be available to answer any questions along with the other EAC members. There's an informational handout sheet provided with frequently asked questions. There's also an informational board with recent articles from various news organizations and science articles. The second item is Earth Day related. Amy Easterly, our co-chair, in conjunction with Catherine Borish from the Newtown Borough EAC, has planned a wonderful Earth Day celebration. On Saturday, April 22nd at 7:00 p.m., at the Historic Newtown Theater, will be presenting environmentally themed documentaries, followed by a panel discussion moderated by WHYY's Marty Moskoway. The panelists will include Phil Coleman of afeusteps.org, which is an energy conservation-related group. Faran Savitz of Penn Environment also will be there. Alyssa Shurgidsky, founder and CEO of Ecosystems, which is a circular model for eliminating single-use plastics. And the fourth, Mary Ann Borg, a naturalist and instructor at Bowman's Hill Wildlife Preserve, a Pennsylvania master naturalist and editor of Butterfly Gardens. And the fifth, Robin Hoy, founder and director of Bucks County Food Chat Alliance, founder of the Wrightstown Farmers Market, and co-chair of the Wrightstown Environmental Advisory Council. The panel of experts will discuss the following topics: becoming a greener consumer, turning your food dollars green, rewilding your backyard, and shifting to renewable energy. So a big event. And attendees to the event will walk away with changes they can make in their own lives to improve the health of the planet. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Gillis?
Yeah, I have a few, Mr. Chair. A couple, not a few. But just for the sake of, I guess, definition, could you just explain to the public what single-use plastic is?
Well, that is the point of the meeting, April 3rd, to have.
You mean it's not determined on what a single-use plastic?
I'll get to it, but to more thoroughly discuss, have a discussion with experts about that. But in general, we're trying to eliminate waste. And the single-use plastic bags is the biggest example. Everybody's, you know, has their reusable bag. They've been using for a decade now. So we should be ready to eliminate the single-use plastic bag. The other part of that is the possibly cups and utensils, depending on, you know, how everything works out. But that is a big source of waste. A lot of restaurants around here. And they also, in the past decade, have, you know, found alternate sources. So we just need to educate the public, get them on board, have the professionals speak to these questions, and, you know, move toward passing an ordinance.
Not to ask a stupid question, but what would be a multi-use plastic bag?
A multi-use plast, well.
We're talking about single? I just want to know what multi-use would be.
Those single-use plastic bags are really flimsy. Sometimes they don't even make it to the car.
But you're not giving me an example of what one is. What would one be so I know what it is?
A multi-use plast?
No, single-use. Tell me what a single-use.
Okay, well, you know, you go into the supermarket and you pull the bag off the thing to put your groceries in. Right, and you go home and maybe recycle it, but that's why we have experts to talk about. They're not really recycled. There's a lot of problems caused by these bags being like, whether it becomes trash or, you know, clogging a recycling machine because they're not meant to be in the recycling machine. So there's issues with the single-use plastic bags.
Okay. I have no doubt about that. I'm just, I just, for my edification, I would like to know what a single-use bag is, what a multi-use bag. How about the garbage bags I use to put my garbage in? Are they considered a single-use?
Technically.
So we're going to eliminate garbage bags in regards like, GLAD is going to have to redo their whole?
The ordinance doesn't.
And I'm not, if you don't, I'm not putting you on the spot.
I'll answer the question. The ordinance doesn't focus on that. It's for retail. Where you would go, you know, a line, you know, of retail people go into a retail establishment, lots of bags being distributed. Your trash bag may last a few days or a week, but you have options too. You have compostable, you have, you know, and you're, we're not focused on you particularly. Just the waste.
No, I got you. Now, in regards to, and you may or may not know, Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, I guess, which they do have ordinances, correct, in regards to single-use or plastic ordinances? How do they police it and enforce it? Do you happen to know offhand, or?
No, I don't know. And that's the point of all this, to bring in experts, right? They educate us, we educate the public.
Okay, fair enough. That's all I have.
I have a question. Are you looking at the financial cost to the vendors that are using these bags and whatnot?
We are, yeah, that is.
Is that part of the whole discussion?
It's a part of the discussion. It's not, it hasn't just started. That is, we're knee-deep into that, financials as well. Or waste, or neck. We're in it.
So, these are a series of questions that we'll have to come on April 3rd and get the answers from the experts.
Well, we'll have a report on that if you don't make it to the meeting. Everybody's, it's a public meeting, everybody's invited. And whatever information we get and feedback we get, it will become part of the document on moving forward.
My pet peeve is the takeout boxes are almost like always plastic, and I recycle them, but, you know, what do they do with the recycling these days?
Recycling is single-stream, so basically it becomes trash and goes into your landfill. Oh, sorry.
You can say it again if you want.
I'll just elaborate a little. Yes, we have a draft ordinance for single-use plastics that our businesses will see on April 3rd at 7:00 o'clock. Before that, we're going to distribute it to the supervisors, so you will be just as informed as they will be. We started working on this in 2018 when I was Vice Chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee. We had a resolution ready to be presented to the supervisors by 2020, but of course, then COVID hit, and we couldn't put a hardship on our businesses who use single-use plastics, like restaurants use for takeout. So we waited until that was over, and we introduced our resolution last year, which was voted yes by every single supervisor here, thankfully. Now, I'm the liaison to the Environmental Advisory Council. We're lucky enough to get a citizen that is just as passionate about this issue as I was to join, and that's Elaine McCarron and the rest of the Environmental Advisory Committee, who has stepped up. We have educated ourselves on every aspect of this issue. We went to businesses to talk to owners and listen to their concerns and questions. We found out that the majority of our businesses were already thinking about the environment and the future and plastics impact on it. Thus, we have gotten to the point we are ready to inform the supervisors about all the information that we have collected so that they can make an informed decision when we ask for their consideration for a plastics ordinance for Newtown Township. We invite them and others to attend April 3rd at 7:00 o'clock. We will answer any and all questions to their satisfaction. And we will also. and we will also ask our businesses to make public comment here at public meetings during the next few months. Although some may disagree, township supervisors can make decisions for the health and welfare of our citizens. Land use and zoning are not the only things that we're elected, elected for. So, once again, we do not intend to uh, pose any hardship for our businesses. We have figured that all out. And uh, with, we're going to try with your help to make Newtown a better place for future generations, and more to come. So, believe me, we are not asking the supervisors to just take our word for it. We're going to give you the empirical uh, statistics and uh, have you hear from all sorts of members of the community to, to, uh, for, most for, and a few maybe against, we don't know. But uh, more to come, thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to board member reports. We have just a couple of things uh, to report as uh, in my chairman's report. We have received, since, since our last meeting, we have received two grants. Um, one grant was for a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for, from the Justice, Justice Assistance Grant Program, and it was um, uh, for license plate reader, license plate readers. Uh, the second grant that we've gotten was from the D C E D. Um, and it was a local share account, and I believe that comes out of uh, gambling proceeds, but I'm not exactly sure. Uh, but that local share account uh, grant was for a little over five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. It's going to be used um, for ADA ramps and stormwater management in the business commons, along with a, a grant that we got last year for making sidewalk connections. So, uh, there will be some work going on in the business commons sidewalks. Um, and so those are, that's the grant report. The other report that I have is that, uh, looking over the um, um, Joint Zoning Council agendas coming up, we have a number of uh, ordinances from the joint, joint zoning uh, with the uh, the jointure, our jointure partners from Wrightstown and Upper Makefield. Uh, so we have a number of uh, ordinances for review coming up, and we'll let the, our solicitors hash that out and uh, help us uh, get that in line. And, and also, in conjunction with that, our comprehensive plan, the, the um, planning commission has uh, sent a recommend, sent that to uh, the board uh, for, with the recommendation to approve it, so we'll be looking at that in upcoming meeting. Uh, that's all I have, um.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
Uh, first, I heard about the license plate readers, um, are they for police cars?
Yes.
Alright, thanks.
Um, you're welcome. Mr. Vice Chair, do you have anything to report?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I have one uh, announcement, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, six to eight P M, the Rainbow, Rainbow Room in Doylestown is hosting a specialty that's called Trans Day of Visibility, a conversation about trans care, equity, and access. The event discussion is open to the community. One topic for discussion includes trans rights, fighting uh, bans on books, flags, athletes, and more. And I just wanted to remind the residents of Newtown, regarding trans rights, the Newtown Township Union Relations Commission is charged with enforcing Newtown Township's anti-discrimination ordinance, which ensures equal employment, housing, use of public accommodations, and access to post-secondary educational institutions regardless of actual or perceived gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. So that, uh, again, uh, the Rainbow Room will have this uh, special meeting on March twenty-ninth, six to eight P M. Thank you.
March twenty-ninth, thank you, that was my question, I missed, I missed the date. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, um, Madam Assistant Secretary, Assistant Treasurer.
Thank you. Uh, I think I've told you uh, pretty much about the Environmental Advisory Council, and when we met last week, it was to continue our planning for this event. That's coming up on April third, so that was, that's pretty much what we spent the whole night talking about. I also was at the Planning Commission meeting last night, uh, where I heard about the, what, you know, what is being proposed at Three Meridian Circle. That's all I got.
I think it was Millstone.
Oh, Mills, I'm sorry. Meridian's near me, sorry.
Okay, uh, members, Mr. Calabro? Mr. Calabro?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, I do have something to report. Um, April first, Saturday, April first, uh, Goodnew Elementary is the Newtown Roadbury Easter Egg Hunt. It's free and open for anyone of all ages, up to grandparents, believe it or not. This is uh, the event the N B A used to do, if everyone remembers, for quite a number of years, and it stopped over COVID, uh, Newtown Roadbury's picked it up. So, uh, it is eight-thirty A M, meet and greet Easter bunny, nine fifteen, egg hunt. Uh, and the rain date is the following Saturday, four, eight, so. Take your kids and, I guess, your grandmother out and get some Easter eggs, so. Thank you.
On my grandkids.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think we got, I think we gave everybody a chance. Um, no public hearings, no land development this evening. We do have some reports from officials, so I have the, our engineer's report.
Uh, thank you, our item for tonight is the two thousand twenty-three Liquid Fuels Road Program, uh, Letter of Recommendation. We opened the bids for this project last week. Uh, we reviewed the bids and found no discrepancies um, in the bid submitted by the low bidder, which is Harris Blacktopping Incorporated. They're the contractor that's, that did the road program last year, and they've done that um, a few years past. So, um, based on our review, uh, we recommend uh, award of the base bid, alternate bid number three, alternate bid number four, alternate bid number eight, and alternate bid number nine, in the total amount of nine hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars and forty cents. Uh, this totals three point zero eight miles of township roadway.
Great, um, any questions from the board? I have one really easy one. Does this, does this include the uh, liquid fuels for this year?
It does, yep.
The updated number?
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Um, seeing no other comments or questions from the board, do I have a, a motion? To approve this, to accept this letter of recommendation for it? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Second.
Second, we have a s- motion and a second, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Three point eight miles?
Yep.
Cool. All those in fa-
Three point zero eight, three point oh eight.
Oh, three point oh eight, sorry.
Okay. Yep. Uh, I see it now, three point oh eight. Um, and I call for comments from the board, from the public. Seeing none, I'll call the question, those in favor of approving the two thousand twenty-three Road Program Letter of Recommendations, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Anything else from the engineers?
That's all I have, thank you.
How about our solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, first item on our report this evening is a consideration of a conditional use decision for Ardana Newtown LLC at twenty-nine forty-eight South Eagle Road. Uh, the board at its last meeting held a hearing and voted to approve uh, a conditional use for that business. Uh, we prepared a written decision, and if the boards have a mind, it would be a motion to approve the conditional use decision for Ardana Newtown LLC.
Do we have a motion?
So, move.
A motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, thank you. Um, any discuss, any discussion from the board? This, this is the written decision of what we.
That's correct.
Decided last, last meeting. Um, any from the public, any discussion from the public? Seeing none, seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of um, approving the conditional use decision for Ardana, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any, any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, next item on our report is uh, consideration by the board of approving a P R D variance decision for the Brennans at one nineteen Colonial Drive, who wish to put in a swimming pool. At your last meeting, we held a hearing on this, and the board voted in favor of that application. Uh, tonight, the board is considering, and if it wishes, it would require a motion to approve the decision and order granting a P R D variance for Mike and Jennifer Brennan at one nineteen Colonial Drive.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Uh, motion and a second. Um, any discussion from the board, any questions? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of approving the P R D variance for the Brennans, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you, next item on our report is consideration of a resolution uh, that would allow Newtown Township to join a consortium of municipalities to oppose legislation regarding the sale of public water and sewer systems to private for-profit companies. This was a uh, resolution, a form resolution that was sent uh, to the township by, I believe, uh, Doylestown Borough, uh, which is taking the lead as the lead agency in this. Um, I put the resolution in um, proper township form, and it is uh, before the board this evening for consideration. Uh, if the boards have a mind, it would be a motion to adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-three dash R dash five.
Alright, do we have such a motion? Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, do we have any discussion from the board?
Yes, I have, I have some questions, this is the first time I'm seeing this, and um, I'm wondering perhaps the entire resolution could be read for the record? Otherwise, I have uh, really concerns that, you know, I haven't had time to review this, I haven't had, I even went on the Bacato website, and there was no mention of this. Uh, the only thing I found was something from Ben Salem uh, that mentioned this, and they were talking about each member of, each municipality, municipality of the consortium will deposit a sum of five thousand dollars to an, to the account. So, you know, in this resolution, it also says that uh, by majority vote, you know, we could have legal action, which costs, will cost money, and the majority vote means, according to this resolution, that only members of the consortium who are present at a meeting, the majority of, of members present at a meeting, not a majority of the members. So, here's again, another kind of jointure that may not, may or may not act in the best interest of Newtown. And the amount of money that may be spent on legal issues is not laid out, and I'm wondering, is this a legal contract? Can we get out of it at any time? Um, you know, we just don't have enough time to, I didn't have enough time to think about this, talk about this, without, you know, being asked to vote on it right away. I mean, it's just, I don't think that's the right way to, to handle a resolution. We've never done that in the past, we've always had some discussion before voting on it, and uh, I would make a motion to table this motion, to approve this, until we had some time to really discuss this without voting on it.
Is there a second for that motion?
Mr. Solicitor, are we under any kind of time constraint on this uh, approval?
I, I don't know the answer to that question, Mr. Calabro. Perhaps Mr. Lewis knows?
Yes, they wanted these resolutions approved this month so they could move forward next month, by the end of this month.
And what?
Whatever, what other municipalities have already signed this? I mean, I've done some searching, I can't find anybody who signed this.
Yeah.
Even on the Bacato site, why, why isn't it on the Bacato site? This is, you know.
Did this come from Bacato?
Kind of a, a, for kind of agreement, without any uh, you know, notification, any time to consider all these uh, items in this resolution, which hasn't been read to the public, by the way.
I, I'd like to echo John's concern about the possible costs, that, that was what was troubling me. Um, there was a fee initially, wasn't there?
Two hundred fifty dollars.
Two hundred fifty.
An- annual fee of two hundred fifty dollars.
Right, but if we do go to some sort of litigation, then we're on the hook for whatever that bill is.
Well, it, yeah, I mean, if a majority of the members approve the taking of action, um, you, if you remain a member of the consortium, you would be agreeing to kick in funds toward helping that uh, legal action succeed.
And it, consider, it's the majority of members who attend a meeting. I know from other kinds of meetings that never, no, not every member attends meetings, okay? So, it can actually be a minority that makes a decision for how much money should be spent, what kind of legal action should be taken. I don't think this uh, this resolution uh, details enough how this is going to work.
And how do we get out of a resolution?
Well, again, we're not entering into an agreement or approving an intergovernmental agreement here. Uh, this is just expressing our desire to join this, at least initially. Uh, this is, this is my read of it, I mean, this is, again, I didn't draft this. I don't think anybody in Newtown drafted it, but.
What is our benefit of uh, going along with this consortium as opposed to not having our own Newtown Township standalone resolution? Of which we were being totally in control of.
I, I would think that there is strength in numbers, uh, would be the argument, that the folks in favor of forming this consortium would uh, put forward as the reason for the consortium. Um, if uh, everybody is sort of fighting this separately, it's not the same as everybody fighting it uh, together.
You know.
It's the best I can tell.
That is why we have, that is why we have peace acts. Bacato is an organization that makes recommendations to peace acts regarding changes in the law, and that's what this consortium is supposed to be doing, but that should be the realm of peace acts, it's act at a state level. You're talking about a state law here? And I don't, I don't understand how Bacato gets into this in terms of litigation and so on. I think it has to be changing the law, and this is a issue of uh, peace acts, that's why we're members of peace acts.
So, say we pass this resolution, and we want to decide at some point that we no longer benefit from being part of this consortium, we can.
Yeah, repeal the resolution.
Repeal the resolution.
So, what, what is the, the ultimate goal, is to prevent legislation that allows the sale to a private entity?
It seems that way, um, there is a, there's a large list of, well, large. Um, there are five items stated in the resolution uh, as the purposes for the consortium. Um, to oppose the sale of municipal water and sewer assets to private utilities, and to take such action, including legal action, reasonably necessary to prevent such sales, to oppose legislation that would impose requirements on public authorities that would benefit private utilities at the cost of residence served by public authorities, to oppose future sales of water and sewer assets that would have a negative impact on residents and taxpayers, to work with legislators to oppose legislation that would undermine municipal water and sewer providers and favor for-profit investor-owned utilities, and to represent municipal interests regarding Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority's proposed collection systems upgrades.
Um, as opposed, I mean, let me say, being different than some other townships that control their own sewer authorities, of which a board of uh, five supervisors would be in control of that vote. I do believe there's a provision, because we are. vote, I do believe there's a provision, because we are under the Newtown Joint Municipal Sewer Authority, that in order to even sell the sewer authority, it would have to be a unanimous vote. That would be five here, and I don't even know how many are in the council, nine?
Nine, seven.
So it would have to be, if one person were to say no, that sale cannot go through. So I think we have a safeguard in regards to our sewer authority, the Newtown Joint Sewer Authority, ever being sold. It would have to be a Herculean task for them to get a unanimous decision for it to be sold. So us going into this, I think we're in better standing than this consortium. So for us to go into this consortium, I think we're going backwards. We're already have a safeguard. As a matter of fact, the last time Mr. Gormley was up here, he even verified that. I think going back to 19, maybe, maybe Mr. Shankman, the 1930-something...
It's 20 years.
When it was established, that was the safeguard within that, that the sewer authority wouldn't be sold out from under us. So I don't see any benefit to this, and even with the consortium, we don't need strength in numbers, because we're already strong already. I mean, that's just my opinion, but I think that's our safeguard in regards to our sewer authority ever being sold.
Thank you, Mr. Calabro. I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like this idea.
John, I just want to say, John, there is a reporter here that heard that, so hopefully he writes that in his...
We might declare this a holiday next meeting. I don't like the idea. It seems like we're getting asked to get on the hook to fight somebody else's battles. I don't want to, I don't want to do that. I'm not in favor of it.
Okay. We do have, this is a point of order, we do have a motion to table on the table.
I have to draw that motion.
Well, we could also have a motion and defeat this, too, and just get it over with.
Well, I don't even know if you need to defeat it.
We don't even have to vote on it.
Take no action.
No action.
Take no action.
Everyone okay with taking no action?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm good with not doing it.
You don't adopt it, you don't adopt it.
Right. Either way, practically the same thing. Okay.
Next item on our report, Mr. Chairman, is consideration of taking a position on the zoning hearing board application scheduled for April 6th. The first one is the application of Pembroke Brandywine LLC, 100 Brandywine Boulevard. They seek variances to install electric vehicle charging stations. I believe that the Board had previously, at a February meeting, authorized us to send a letter of support in favor of that application, and I just wanted to make sure that that advice still stood, and I will certainly be happy to author that letter and send it to the zoning hearing board ahead of their April 6th meeting.
I'm still in favor of that letter.
I'm still in favor of that letter. Do we need another?
No. I think that action was taken. I'm just looking for consensus, yeah. Second item is the issue that Ms. Driscoll discussed, the Patchenger-Reinstein Three Millstone Drive-In Ground Pool. I know that the Planning Commission wants to have the, would like to have the applicants come back before them and get a copy of Remington Vernix's review letter for this, but I was wondering whether the Board wanted to take any action, perhaps a conditional action, depending on what the Planning Commission ultimately recommends with regard to appearing and representing the township at this hearing.
Mr. Solicitor may have, just a point of clarification, there is no Remington Vernix review on this application. This is a zoning hearing board application, it's not reviewed by the consultant.
Oh, okay. I was referring to...
Once they receive their relief, the engineer will get the pool permit, and that's what will be reviewed.
So we're not looking for a report, we're just looking for the applicants to pare down their, their request for relief and return to the Planning Commission, although they did not indicate that they would be doing that.
Is that something we can make contingent upon their going to the zoning hearing board?
You mean, back to the Planning Commission? Or we'd have to notify them of that?
Well, time is of the essence here, because the Planning Commission meets on Tuesday, and then Thursday would be the zoning hearing.
That's correct.
So, I mean, I think our decision is whether we want to send our solicitor to defend the township in this case. I mean, I've seen that they've gotten two sightings of relief, and now they're coming for a third. I don't know. In the past, when I've seen some applications where they had one sighting of a relief, it was kind of looked down upon, so I don't know what the opinion of the Board would be on this.
I certainly wouldn't want to be supporting it in the face of what we know and what the Planning Commission is requesting, requiring.
Well, the options are authorize the solicitor to attend and oppose, have me write a letter to the zoning hearing board stating our concerns with the application, or just take no position and letting the zoning hearing board decide the case.
Any other?
I don't know enough about this, so...
Can everybody hear John?
Yeah.
He said, I was getting some feedback, so I...
He said he doesn't know enough about this.
From what I heard last night, I would think the least that we could do is have you send a letter. As you said, there's no way we can move this forward with what we know, so, of course, I'm not the one that's an expert on how this works, but it seems to me that I don't see any reason to send you if we could just get the job done by sending them a letter.
Well, again, even if you send me, the zoning hearing board's going to make their own decision on it, so the most forceful way to oppose would be to send me. The second way would be to write a letter, which the zoning hearing board can read and ignore, and there won't be any evidence in the record against the application, so it'll just be the applicant's testimony, but they will, you know, have to consider whether the applicant has a hardship. And in the letter, I would ask that they determine whether there is actually a true legal hardship here, as defined by law, to warrant the issuance of this additional variance, the third variance of its type. But again, the Board, I'm looking for direction.
Well, or we can just leave it in the hands of the zoning hearing board to make that decision.
Or we can do, take no action and leave it in the hands of the zoning hearing board.
I would like you to send a letter, myself, and include the Planning Commission synopsis as an attachment. So even if they don't go back to the Planning Commission, they have the Planning Commission's input in front of them.
I agree with that.
I have faith in our zoning hearing board to make a decision.
I'll let the zoning hearing board make a decision. Save us a couple bucks on the letter from our solicitor.
Okay. Okay. Then we will take no action on that, and I'll limit the letter writing to the zoning hearing board to support the electric vehicle charging stations of Brandywine. That concludes our report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Brings us to the manager's report. It looks like Mr. Lewis is ready with his microphone on already.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance this evening is $5,754,988. Plan expirations before the Board with no action required. We have Chief Forsythe to give the monthly emergency services report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm happy to report for the month of February, we responded to 119 calls for service, we completed 89 fire safety inspections in Newtown Township and three in Newtown Borough. We responded to 15 alarm systems, two covers, eight dwelling fires, 69 EMS calls, one wires-out call, one special assignment, seven CO alarms, one rescue, two assistive squads, seven fumes calls, two building fires, one rubbish fire, and one brush fire. That's our activity. March 13th, we filed the SAFER grant for $1.5 million for the next three years. Hopefully, we can secure this grant this time to hire four new firefighters to expand our services, and I think that is my report for the month of February.
Any questions for the chief? I have, go ahead, John, and I have one as well.
In your report, you mentioned you met with Chief Weaver, Warren Davis, on the 15th of March, and one of the items we discussed is the needs for a new fire station. I thought this was a dead issue after the consultant recommended a new fire station. Can you elaborate a little bit on that need?
The need for a new fire station was recommended in the 2018 study, and we are just pursuing that at this point with the Board and the Fire Services Committee to make some headway and some decision on which direction we're going to go.
I believe some of the discussion was also, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, that the presentation, Warren Dallas was going to create a presentation and come before the Board at either a work session or a regular session.
That is correct.
With the presentation around all those factors.
There's a lot of needs, there's a lot of needs that were discussed in the 2018 study that have never been addressed by the township, and we are getting into a position where some of these needs need to be addressed sooner than later. We've already waited five years, and our situation is getting worse, and we need to take some type of action to improve and try to come into ordinance with some of the recommendations from the study.
And we have made some, we have made some progress, but...
Yes.
There was a long report and had lots of recommendations.
Yes.
So, any other questions? Mine is unrelated. I've been getting alerts on my phone about dry conditions and fire conditions. Is that something?
With the low humidity and the wind, the hazards for wildfires are greater. In the upper end of Bucks County, they're burning acres a day, so unfortunately, we don't have many acres left to open burn, so in the upper end of Bucks County, there are some severe wildfires, brush fires, and we're just trying to contain that with the alerts. So the alerts you're getting on the phone, that's what they're for, because of the low humidity and the fire danger at this time.
Thank you. That explains it, so it's a real thing.
Yes.
I just want to say that, much to my surprise, I was driving along one day on the border of, I guess, Wrightstown and Upper Makefield, and there was a fire on the side of the road. It was a brush fire. I've never seen that before. I called the chief right away, and they were out there posthaste, but I could see that would have grown very large very quickly, and just out in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, we still have some areas around that we could have some serious brush fires, but knock on wood, they've, we've been very quiet so far.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more item under my report for the Board's consideration. As we've done in previous years, we've received the Bucks County Consortium's stone bid. This is for the purchase of various road materials and stone for minor repairs. An appropriate motion would be a motion to approve the purchase of road materials through the Bucks County Consortium in accordance with the Public Works Director's memorandum.
All of this information is our packet? Thank you, Mr. Calabro.
Yes.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. With a motion and a second, any further discussion from the Board? It was in our packets, but I tell you, when you look at that spreadsheet, it was really tiny. Have a motion and a second, any comments, other questions from the Board, from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the purchase of road materials through the Bucks County Consortium, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'll turn it over to our Assistant Secretary, Assistant Treasurer, for the bills, minutes and bills.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our March 8, 2023, meeting.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we had seconds, we had seconds all around. I was just trying to decide who, but have a motion and a second. Any questions from the Board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes of March 22nd, say, of March, March 8th, I'm sorry. Today's March 22nd, I'm looking at the wrong line. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
I'd like to make a motion to pay our bills in the amount of $151,000.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, just a point of order. I don't think Mr. Mack was here for that meeting. He would have to abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right. Thank you.
You're welcome, sure.
So let the record reflect, it was four ayes and one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Calabro. Bills list.
I'd like to make a motion to pay our bills in the amount of $151,561.79.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the Board?
I just have a question about one charge on page five for Shore's signs to refurbish vandalized sign at Robert's Ridge Park for $2,757. What happened exactly?
Somebody smashed the sign.
Is that the sign that faces Lower Dollywood Road?
No, it was at Helen Randall.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
It was at Helen Randall Park. It was the sign when you pull in the entranceway.
Oh, it says Robert's Ridge Park in the bills list.
No, does it? No, that's a typo. It was at Helen Randall.
Okay, thank you.
Did you vote on that?
Do we need to make a, do we need to make it, any administrative change? Okay. So, let me see, we got a motion and a second? Any questions from the public or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying the bills as listed on the March 22nd, 2023 list, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
I'd like to make a motion for total of inter-fund transfers in the amount of $246,000 even.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the Board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the inter-fund transfers for March 22nd, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Okay, that brings us to our second round of public comment. Is there any public comment for this time of the evening? Seeing none, we'll move right along to old business. Any old business to report?
Mr. Chair, I neglected to ask Leanna when she was going over the road program, and it's just that I was asked by a resident as to why we do not pay for 13, and if you could, I know the answer to it, but if you could answer the question for the public.
I think that's because it's a state road.
So PennDOT will be...
PennDOT is responsible for the payment.
Responsible, okay.
Yep.
So every time we hit a bump, just curse out PennDOT.
That's correct.
Amen. I hear you. Thank you, Leanna.
People have been known to call their state reps or state senators about that, too. I had just a little bit of business to report on old business, the committee appointments for the Economic Development Committee. We've made progress. I've contacted Matt Peters, and we've had some email exchanges. We're up to six p... We're up to six people who are interested, we're waiting for one resume to get in so that we can make that report to you. So as soon as we get a resume, I believe we have six names to request appointment. And hopefully, we'll have that all in place for the next meeting, in the packet for the next meeting, so you get a chance to look it over. And any other old business? New business, any new business? Going once, going twice? I don't think we've mentioned that we had an executive session.
Yeah, I was prepared to make that announcement, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to note for the record that the board met an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss a matter of pending litigation regarding the Provco lawsuits.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Any other business this evening? I see none, so without objection, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much for coming.